I saw the thing that said it's being recorded. I thought I did when I came in.
Well, let's call meeting order. We'll start by taking attendance.
Kathryn Smetschnik.
Here.
Nick Webb.
Here.
Bertram Schmitz. Bert, can you hear us? Okay. He's, he's there. It could be. Lawrence Mallett.
Here.
Mark texted me that he would not be here tonight. Joan Boulati.
Here.
Mary Jo Phelps.
Here.
Okay.
Excellent. So the next word of business is review and approval of last month's meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
My motion, I will be approved on the minutes from a January. I'll step in.
Excellent. Is there any debate about the meeting minutes? No?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Do we have to say that every time? Now I noticed some minutes that said approving the minutes minus the joint plan. You have to say that every time?
All opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Just a couple of chair comments. I know it's Valentine's Day, so we'll try and get it all on time. And I appreciate everybody showing up in really full condition, so. I think that's great. So that's all I had to say in the chairman comments. So should we go right to the administrative workshops, the pollinator pathway? Do nothing really to go on with that residential food composting?
Can I just say something about pollinator pathway?
Yes.
Because I'm hoping we can have one of those library things.
Oh, sure.
Soon.
Yeah.
I'm also, I'm also hoping we can get a list of plants that are appropriate for our area on, on that sidebar.
On the sidebar.
The sidebar, you have the Japanese knotweed thing, and I asked if you could put the.
Oh, okay.
The composting flyer on there too, so we can just grip on it.
Yes. And I think that's great, everyone. So cool, really good idea.
That's awesome.
I don't think we'll do the presentations until it gets closer to the planting season.
That was like April or something?
April is perfect, yeah.
Okay.
I'll talk to Sheri and Anne too.
Okay.
They kind of cut me out now. I no longer have the MCO.
Oh, okay. Well, whatever, whoever does it, I myself am very interested.
Yeah, no, I learn something every time I go through them, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Say, I have something that I'm hoping though, this is very short of pollinator, you know, as you have in town, but I think also kind of lists somewhere.
I might have this. Oh, yeah, if you'd like, I'll forward those around.
List of?
Native pollinator plants.
Yes, here's the, I've been asking continuously. I can't find it myself either. Where is it? Where appears, huh? Where is it that people who want to get it? I see a pollinator patch right on town, okay, so it says for information again about decontaining woods. That's still through?
Yeah.
Okay. But somewhere is the map that shows where the existing pollinator, uh, pollinator gardens are.
Yes.
That we have.
Yeah, we love it.
Oh, where is it? I keep asking somebody to send it to me, so I can't find it. Only doing that, I can't find it.
I'll send it to you. It's on the National Pollinator Pathway.
Right, I have that too. Well, wait. So that shows plenty?
Yeah.
Here we go, yeah, town gardens. I see though, but there's also, when we started this a couple of years ago, we asked people to.
Right.
Say, you know, so we doesn't know where they are and have.
Yeah.
And so they said, so we have a.
Yeah, I sent all those in and then Sheri added more to it this year.
Okay, so pollinator patch, we're going to ask.
I'll send you those.
I don't see anything. This is just where you upload your file.
I'll send you those.
I can't find it anywhere near here. There is a map showing where they are right now.
I'll send you those.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Okay.
I don't have a password yet.
We never have before.
I have a password that they were, everyone's, and I didn't have it.
I don't.
Cooperation.
I, I don't.
So that, do people actually start planning right now?
Yes.
For me?
Uh, not right now. Well, I mean, I was prepared by.
It takes you about a month before you start to, 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 to prepare your ground.
Well, that's true.
Have we reached out to them? So if somebody who just answered you that one, good.
Which one?
Right behind the church.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I don't get the line. And Sheri is actually huge garden.
Oh, yeah.
They've got a water, which immediately got launched behind the church.
Who's all?
Oh, yeah, okay.
But next to it, oh, they created a strip of pollinator path. Oh, perfect. So, yeah, I lived in a water park. Sheri's amazing. I will send that to you.
Okay. Because I, everyone already has shared the answer, I said, you may also give the answer.
Not wrong. I got this shit. I'm like that.
Unless you use the magic word.
You don't have the technology right now. What is this? This is a map of pollinator gardens, public, private, county, national pollinator path.
That's what I was going to send you.
Right, so, because I think I run the National Pollinator Patch, they, uh, we have like about.
So I uploaded all those into it and then Sheri updated it this past year.
Thank you.
So residential food composting.
Yeah, we need to have another, but not at the dump, because people who go to the dump are already.
I don't think they already are.
Some.
I think we could do another one at the dump and then now add a strip. Um, it's hard to.
Were you like, did you just say?
I did say.
Yeah, that was awesome.
The big one.
Just, just so folks, Todd gave me the numbers for the first part of February. It was four hundred and ninety-four pounds down from five sixty in that same week in January.
Okay.
December was five hundred, November was two twenty-three at the same point of the month. So, you know, it looks, it, it, it's kind of, it's, it's not going terribly up or down, but there have, I mean, there's been about seven tons of material saved so far. So if there's numbers or metrics or sort of winning points to put together, we can talk about that. And, and at some point, Nick, when there's a minute, I can talk to you a little bit about textile recycling. That's a conversation that folks are having right now.
I'm sorry, I missed the last half of what you just said.
So there is a potential for the town to also, in addition to the residential food composting, to start a textile compost, or textile compost, a textile recycling area. Uh, and join, yeah, so I, I've been talking to Todd about that. The Sustainability Committee, um, at their last meeting sort of put their, you know, sort of stamp of approval and desire to go forward with that. You know, certainly, you know, if this group is interested, you know, you can lend your, your thoughts to that too. But the idea being that Todd would find a place at, um, the transfer station and we would potentially sign on to the pricing schedule that CROG, Capital Region Council of Governments, had set up through, um, a company and, and join a group of Connecticut towns who are doing that. So just a heads up.
Okay, here's the number. Thank you. I'll call you maybe this week, maybe early next week.
Perfect.
Okay. Japanese knotweed, not much going on right now, but probably in the next month, we should put out the work on the spring, how to make this stuff. I just saw a study. And actually, it was kind of encouraging that one out of twenty people don't think Japanese knotweed is a major base. And to me, that means that two-thirds do think it's a major base, which means we've done our, we've done our work and we've raised the level of knowledge of the Japanese knotweed. So that is really good news, but I think we need to get everybody so that they're worried about it. So as important as that's one thing that we should focus on creating. And you're passionate about that, Katherine, so I'll, I'll work with you on that. Cool. Open space set aside committee, we're holding that in the bank while we're working on the land acquisition. Library, Joan, do you want to give some quick report on the infrared camera?
I have it right here.
Oh.
I took it out.
We can't really see it very well because we're focused. Oh, okay, cool.
Yeah. Um, they hadn't had it catalogued, so they found it upstairs in reference. The director found it.
Yeah.
And so then I, once it was catalogued, they called me and I took it out.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So you can take some pictures?
I haven't yet, but I want to catch this coyote in my backyard.
But take a picture of your house and find out where heat is is taking. That's what the infrared is supposed to do.
I want to do that. That's right. Thank you very much. We have like thirty inches of insulation in here. I don't, our house is so airtight, I don't think anything can get in or out, but I think it's too airtight. But, um, yeah, I, I want to find out if there's any water getting through because I see a little bit of something.
Oh, interesting. I don't know what to do with that. Another thing you can use it for is down basically, you can look it and take a picture of your, um, fuses, see if there's any that are harder than the rest.
Oh, that's good to know. I'm supposed to return this actually tonight, so I got to get it back there as soon as I can, so somebody else can take it out.
All right, cool. Well, thank you for doing that, Karen, by the way. That was really, really powerful rep when they came back and they said they didn't have it.
Oh, I know. And then when I went up, they still didn't know when I went there, but they, somebody called the director and the director said, oh, yeah, I think I saw it in the back room in reference.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, good, good. Well, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was, are, did you, uh, try to take me the GoPro?
Say that again.
Uh, that's totally different.
Well, so the last time I tried to check it out, you were on camera and they said, no, it's checked out. So I thought that was good. That's exciting. But what they meant was the GoPro had been checked out. There's a Go, they actually have a GoPro camera. That's part of the library.
Oh.
So then this is in check down.
Well, at least I know this is really infrared because it says it right on there.
Yeah, no, that's good. That's good. Thank you for doing that. So, uh, in terms of new business.
We're going to talk about public education, public information.
Oh, good. Well, so if Joan takes some photos with it. We can publish those as part of it.
Okay.
If she doesn't, then I'll check it out next and I'll take photos with it and I'll sort of put something together that we can get out to.
Maybe I'm wrong. I thought it was to kind of do like to see where she's using heat in your head.
Exactly.
Okay.
You got it right.
Yes, great.
So, um, if Joan takes pictures tonight, great. If she returns it, then I will take it out and I'll take some pictures. And then I'll put it together prior to getting out, um, all things quietly, then I can get it up on the next tour and do our usual, uh, outreach. Oh, that's not good.
Can you give me till tomorrow to take, take it out, to go back? Because I wasn't planning, I didn't want to go out.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, please do.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, they do all the time. They don't charge you all the library funds, basically, so.
No, I usually just call them and renew things and they renew it on the phone.
That's, that's, it's better than that.
Yeah.
So I did not do the research on bicycle racks. I promised we would do it.
You mean in terms of?
I had a.
Costs?
No. I had heard that it was part of, and it hasn't been even though. The, the downtown revitalization mentioned that they were going to add bicycle racks. Do you know if that's true?
No, it's on, um, it's sort of a general list for consideration by the Subcommittee for the Town Council that's kind of tasked with the, the overall picture for downtown. No one has, it, it isn't sort of a project at this stage that I'm aware of that that's sort of funded or advancing or, or locations are being identified. But it's on the list of things that should be considered and needs to, they, they kind of need to be ranked in sort of priority of where they, they fit with all the rest of the projects. So I'm waiting to hear back from council members about when the next, um, Subcommittee meeting will be. And once we know that, um, maybe we'll get a better sense of where that might, might happen.
Okay. All right, good, good. Um, because if they don't, Town Council has the, you know, they've got the power of the purse, so. If they're going to put it in, great. If not, then we, we need to figure out what we're going to do. But I don't think we should do it until they come through their process. If everybody's okay with that. Uh, other piece of new business is the fortieth Annual Connecticut Land Conservation Conference, which is Saturday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Did you put that on there?
Abby, Abby put it on.
Oh, Abby, you want to talk to this?
It just, and just so folks are aware that there is a conference happening, um, if there's any folks who want to attend, that registration fees would need to be approved through this body. So, Sheri, I don't have any budget numbers in front of me, so I, I don't have a whole lot of information on, on what's available for training, but, um, if anybody wanted to go to be reimbursed, we would, we would need this group to approve it.
Okay.
What we don't know is on the current budget, what was approved.
Oh, I can get you that.
Could you send that to us?
Yeah.
Okay, the final, because we know what you proposed.
Oh, I only know what I proposed. I don't know what was actually approved. I just assumed we not what we proposed.
I thought we did.
Well.
Um, Sue's not in there, it's gone, right?
Yes, Sue is gone.
Who's the?
Ricky. The assistant.
Okay.
I, I will get a copy of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get, I'll get a copy for everybody and we'll, and I will find out, um, from Carl before he goes this week where we stand on, um, on the next year's budget as well, just so we have an idea of what training funds you'll have available.
Okay, but for March, it's actually going to be out of this budget. So if anybody's interested, March twenty-third?
Now, I'm assuming members of the land trust, or something.
I would assume.
Right? So this fortieth annual, they contrasted out for the members and interested people, uh, the land trust was going to assist them as well.
Yeah. These.
Arranging for it, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
We have one or two members.
Yeah, it'd be great if we had one or two. So if anybody's interested, can they send me an email? And once we get the budget from Abby, the election, we'll support it. Okay?
It doesn't say about the cost, it just says extra fifteen dollars after registrations received after March first.
Yeah, they, they just last week released what the fee is and I, I thought, I.
I thought it was a different, I thought that was a, that was more of a less than. Step off is different.
I mean, this is a really interesting one, didn't work.
Yeah, like, that's what I'm saying. I would, I, I would pay my own, that.
Well.
If you go on, if you go on their website, it has the cost of it.
Okay.
Okay.
I know you had sent me an email saying that you were interested in going.
Oh, here we go.
Is that for non-members or membership? We don't, we're not a member.
We're not a member.
Okay.
So it would be the higher rate.
No, 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 the, the, it will support you.
Okay, all right.
I think we had a hundred and fifty in terms of education, so. That would be well worth it for us.
Oh, I see. Here, non-members, so it's eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, and if you, you have to get it in by a certain date, otherwise, otherwise you have to add fifteen dollars on.
Exactly. March first, March first.
Abby, do they need a motion to pay for the cost, budget permitting?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Can I get a motion that we send one person budget permitting to this conference?
I wouldn't say, or do you want one of us to make that motion?
Please.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You just say so moved.
There you go, so moved.
I get a sec. One, that's a second. Any discussion? Again, this is ending, you know, that the budget from this is.
The family ends up like the one person, right?
Right. But anybody else can go at their own cost.
Yeah. And I'll take first come, first served.
So you have a motion in the floor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Mike. Joan?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
No, Bert's. I don't know, I hope he's all right.
Bert!
Well, you know, he's got like three computers and like, I work in them all. I know, but he was on, now there's no.
Yeah, he was talking to us before the meeting.
So now he's not, so I hope so.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
He could have it on mute.
He could, we could be on mute. Bert, but I didn't see.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Hmm, yeah. Maybe we lost the, he lost the connection.
My, my guess is he lost. So. Uh, does anybody have any additions for our next meeting?
Just that I would like to set dates for things, so I can plan, like, when are we going to do the thing at the town, town, you know? I would like to set some dates for when we're doing those things.
I'm kind of viewing you as our food waste person.
Okay. I would be one of the food waste person. Do we get another total on the left going moving here?
Abby just said that.
Down. Yeah.
Okay. In fairness, I did go this past couple of weeks because I was away on vacation. And so that's why it went down.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, it's all yours. I, um, I was, I have been distressed the past few weeks when I'm on, because there have been plastic bags in there.
Oh, you're kidding.
Red bags with food scraps in them.
Oh, that's not.
Okay, so that's a notice that needs to go out. That's something that I just know.
It's a vague sign.
It's something that they want, they're putting it in there and I'm going to put a post out. I was going to do something and say, just a reminder.
Okay.
I literally do compost, so I put my bag in there. I mean, I need to know. Oh, no, personally, I throw up almost nothing. I mean, I literally have no compost. I have. Just trash. Just such nervous yourself, so you don't use. But also stuff that you can't compost, like leaves and cheese and stuff, literally, I mean, we, we, I don't make, like, there's no waste in my house, right? There's not, no waste. Even if I take a chicken, I eat everything I, I'm eating raw food and then boiling the bones for home cooks. So by the time you're done, I grind it down with cornmeal. I literally don't throw anything. Like, it takes like forever for a, a thing to be, to bring to the, to. But I'm not one of those, you know, I, I'm. Unusual. I'm not one of those extreme.
So I, I brought in about twenty pounds of meat that I don't.
I didn't have any. Like, exactly, that's about.
It's amazing how heavy it is because.
It'd be ten and twenty.
My trash is now so much lighter because the food waste is the head and part.
Right, it is, it's pretty. I want to talk, so I would have to.
Okay, so it's from a dates perspective, it sounds to me like we've got to put some dates on the calendar on Twitter.
I would love to put some dates on the.
Okay, so. So next I should come back with a couple of opposed dates, Sheri. I will make it out. Okay? Second thing that we have to come back to dates on is when are we going to do, uh, and I will reach out to Sheri and see if we can get something at the library for the pollinator.
And have we kind of given a idea of, of a cleanup in that area?
No.
Oh, good, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, uh, we did it last, not last year, but the year before on Earth Day.
Right.
So about two workshops, sustainability.
Cleaning up that nasty area.
Well, the whole, well, we did a, I think the Earth Day, it was pretty.
Oh, was it? Oh, were you thinking behind the?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you have it in there, right?
Well, we did.
Oh, I remember that. This one Earth Day thing was, was the unusual, it was pretty big in.
It was big. And we did all downtown area and we did it back there and it was really good.
One, like all of this.
So I think the Food Education Committee and Sustainability, we should give a poll.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, uh.
I know that you did some studies.
So why don't we, why don't you put, why don't we put that on the calendar in terms of the Earth Day cleanup?
Okay.
I think that would be good.
Sounds great.
Um, I will reach out to the Education Committee.
Okay.
Who has a good relationship with sustainability?
Well, I, I talked to Brett, the game.
So, yeah, bring it, bring it up with Brett.
They have a poll that you think they have? I think they have three. They have at least three.
So it's wrong.
Yes.
Fifty percent.
Yeah.
Hello, hey, guys.
Hi.
Hi.
I just, there's so much.
What's over the, between the houses, can't go, it's, it's, no one can know where it will lie, which is why I'm.
No, but I'm trying to open that.
I have.
I don't, I don't, well, first of all, you really need to get to figure it out, like, I don't want to do the same work that personal. That's true. Yeah, that's not. But you tell me, say, if you guys have built, have enough people on there, so maybe we should be conservation slash sustainability.
Yeah.
Like we used to be, webbing slash conservation, because I do the same work.
Right, right. Well, I have a specific mandate to get us certified, you know, sustainable CT.
But they have used our work to get that.
Well, I know that.
But they use that for, that's the whole thing, right? And that's what it's supposed to do, and it's supposed to revise, but it's all focused on the same thing that we do. It's almost like there should be a conservation slash sustainability supplement.
Well, not a, I think it should be one big committee.
Or one big committee.
We should increase the size, we should do that.
That's true. And I don't, of, of course, and it's all the same thing, right? But I suppose work will be more difficult to cover. You know, just. Okay. I mean, we should, you talked to Brett about it.
Well, I'll talk to, uh, the council then.
All right. Let's just.
No.
Hundred people.
Um, yeah, so it's two. Are there any correspondence, Sheri?
Sheri?
Sheri, that's right. I have a Sheri to work on still a while.
Okay, um, just to hand out, uh, the stuff that I sent you ahead of the meeting, the land conservation, January monthly review.
Yeah.
Uh, support, oh, Connecticut coastal, Connecticut River coastal area. Hackewick, yeah, all those. Um, we um, are not a member of Hackewick this year. That was but for budgetary reasons.
Right.
So you can go if you want and pay for your, you know, at your own cost.
Right, right.
And then Connecticut River Coastal, that's the one we send fifty dollars with.
Yeah.
They are already asking for money for next year.
For next year.
Which one is this?
Uh, Connecticut River Coastal. Uh, Connecticut River Coastal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, what they, they did send us on January 11th, a letter, uh, doing, you know, this is what we do, you know, basically, and at the end of it, it was, thank you for your generosity and continued support added to it.
That's the one that asks how much?
They asked for like fifteen.
They have like a per capita that they, they send a bill to, and it looks like a bill, but it is, they send a statement to the town manager, and they copy that on this, that's the one that we sent fifty, um, you usually send a fifty dollar donation, which you've done for this fiscal year.
Yes. But I'm wondering, why is it that, that they contribute, maybe over more, I mean, I don't know, you know, like.
Well.
What is the work you're doing, how is it?
They, they put out, I'm sorry, this works, and which seems pretty good.
How about? I can, um, well, I can send this to you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
You can take a look at it, but, yeah.
Okay, sorry, just one second.
Okay, any other correspondence?
Uh, looking, I did get a statement of your, your current budget, and you have one thousand thirty-five dollars.
Okay.
You have spent, uh, you spent one hundred fifteen dollars so far.
Oh.
And that was on. That includes the donation to the Connecticut River, and, oh, we did, we did, um, put in, uh, register, an annual fee in for Kathy.
Okay.
So we are a member of Kakiwick.
Okay.
And that usually comes up in these, oh, yeah, they had their annual, their annual meeting is in the fall, cause is in the spring.
Okay.
Something cause is coming up, but you may attended that one at your own cost due to budgetary reasons. And that seems to be it.
Okay.
You should have made, you know, you should see that movie.
You should see it, it's a wonderful, it's amazing, I don't know, the documentary, it is.
Abby, it's probably, we should be very short.
Okay, anyway, okay, so, uh, given Abby's shortened timeframe, we should move to the Subcommittee. And, uh, you know, there's been some, some progress made, and, uh, so, and next, the Subcommittee, start by taking attendance. Okay.
So we've got. Seven oh five by Nick.
What's that?
I just put you starting at seven oh five.
Okay.
By Nick.
So we've got Mike C, Mike H, and now Alan, too. How is it?
Alan is on.
It's with the CLCT.
He's not a member of the committee.
He's a member of our, our, so. He's part of our group, um, with regards to the land acquisition.
Um, he is?
I, yes.
I didn't know that.
Well, he's not, he can't be part of our little.
He just can't.
Yes.
He's just attending from the land trust.
Yeah, he's here to, uh, to attend, yeah, and, but, but again, you know, welcome, I'm legally, you won't hear when we, um, I had the vote to create the committee.
Right.
So, uh, you're here for the CLCT, um, or on the actual land acquisition Subcommittee, um, the two, uh, commissions voted, and at that time, you weren't there to be gone, so, uh, you're here pretending, uh, simply as a member of the Land Management.
Right, okay, so, um, the only person we're missing is Mark J.
And I have a pretty short report to make, next one.
Well, first of all, you have to approve the minutes, the minutes of January 10th.
So, uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from last month? Well, we can approve.
Mike C?
Mike C, I'm for the second, next one.
Any, uh, consip, no, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
That's just for the Land Trust, the, the committee.
All right, so now, all right, okay, so, um, we had excellent, uh, um, progress, progress with regard to what occurred since the last meeting. Um, we were, uh, we had sent every, all the commissioners in with having our planners' help to the, uh, appraiser, Mr. Frey, uh, so that he could move forward in completing an appraisal report on a subject property. Uh, Mr. Frey sent his yellow book appraisal report, is drafted on January 24th, um, in which he set a value to the property. Um, I, uh, we then sent a copy of that appraisal's report by Mr. Frey to the individual that we needed to hire to review that report to ensure that it complied with all yellow book, uh, uh, requirements, that was Mr. Parsimo. So that was sent, and on, uh, February 11th of 2024, Mr. Parsimo sent that, his review would recommend to require minor edits and modifications to Mr. Frey's report, so that it would fully comply with yellow book requirements.
And I saw what you had asked, but I didn't see his response. Uh, it was just, he, he asked for different modifications to be made in the report, just. No, I understand that, but he did change the value of it.
Well, I didn't know if the modifications that happened, the incorporate height to the report, would change value, right? So everything Mr. Parsimo said, what that was required.
Yeah.
It was sent to Mr. Frey, incorporated into his final.
Oh, yeah.
So now, on today, literally today, I received Mr. Frey's, uh, final report, which incorporated all of the changes recommended by Mr. Parsimo, and that did not change the price in the original report.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if we want to say that.
No.
I don't make sense of saying, I won't, but he set a fair market value to the property, so now we have that. And that final report of Mr. Frey gets sent back to Mr. Parsimo now, to make sure that all the edits and the amendments were made, and that the report now complies with all the yellow book requirements, so that we can use that, uh, in connection assessing, we're going to purchase the property, the Land Trust, have what the fair market value will be, and also we can use that report in the grant applications around. So at this stage, we're waiting on, Mr. Parsimo's got that final report from Mr. Frey today.
Okay.
We're waiting for him to report back to us.
Yeah.
Um, to say whether or not that final report is okay and meets all the requirements of yellow book. And if it does, um, then we're going to present that final report to the Land Trust in its last meeting in February, which is on February 27th, that's Tuesday, February 27th, and, uh, at that time, all the members will, uh, see what the, uh, fair market value report is from December, and then they'll vote on what we would feel would be the price that we should, uh, bring forward to the owners of the property as a recommended purchase price. And, uh, so we're going to have to move for a vote on, uh, February, uh, 27th, that the CLCP will, or authorization on our negotiation Subcommittee going vote.
Do you want me there on that one? I'm still not a member of the Land Trust, but answering, it might be, it might be good, okay, yeah, I think your presence there would be good.
You're talking about the Board of Directors, are you, for all that?
Conservation Trust, uh, Board of Directors meeting, so that's on Tuesday, February 27th, uh, and, uh, what time is that?
No, it's six thirty.
Oh, six thirty.
Oh, six thirty, where's that going to be?
I think, oh, okay. Okay, um, so you have the nice four questions that you have asked.
No.
So, once we get that vote to go ahead, um, then the, uh, negotiations could then go forward, uh, and, uh, arrange for a meeting with the owners and a discussion on that. And if, if we have a tentative agreement, um, then we can, uh, have an attorney prepare, um, the agreement we need to go, to then go forward and basically ungratefully indicate that they will hold the property.
Right.
Depending on.
So when you get to that stage.
Yep.
I have to go back to the Town Council to update them. Okay, and time then for what's coming next.
Okay, um, at this point, I think, um, you should probably stop, start talking about future steps until you get this one done.
Yes, yeah, okay, again, uh, no, that's fine, once we get a tentative understanding with the owners, that they're willing to go forward at the price that we're going to set by the CLCP at the upcoming meeting, uh, then we have to go into contract, get everything right, and these are documents that we're going to be, when we do our application.
Right, right, okay, right.
Thank you for awesome.
One, one thing I would just say for folks, when you're thinking through, um, as you get to the next phases, just in a little bit of extra lead time to get onto Town Council agendas, because they are packed right now, um, and would be packed, I think, for the foreseeable future, so, so just keep in mind, if you hit, once, once you know a target timeframe that you might want to get back in front of them, we should, we should prep early.
Okay, I doubt I will need a lot of time, but I do need to pick them off today. Okay, but that's a good, uh, point, Patty. Right, right, outstanding, I think that's, uh, is there anything else that's going on that we should be aware of from Land Trust as well? We, we got the, um, got a, a grant for, uh, from the Connecticut Land Conservation Council. Okay. Um, that, that, and we also got, um, check down. So, okay, so.
What was that check from me? Check from me?
I think it was three grand, wasn't it?
It was three grand.
And, uh, and I would just note with regard to that, that, uh, when I got Mr., um, Frey's final, uh, report with all the modifications and edits, I told him to give us his final invoice, so that we can submit it at the CLCP meeting, and the invoice remains as he quoted, three thousand dollars. So, um, we got the three from the town, so, um, that's your, wow, and we sent you that, and then we only have Mr. Parsimo's, uh, 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 final, uh, invoice, which I will probably get when he gives us his final report on his Frey's money.
Right. From CLCT is twenty-six hundred, I think, or twenty-four hundred.
And that, that, those funds, that, that grant was written specifically to cover Mr. Frey's work.
Okay.
So that's, so the reimbursement should go, I, I believe their intention, and jock with y'all, that's, that's fine too, but it was intended for the appraisal, not the appraisal review, so just when the reimbursement goes in.
Okay, so, we could just swap it out, yeah, so, uh, the grant would be for the, uh, appraisal, and then the money that we got from the town, can we use that for the appraisal review?
Um, I'm, you know, I'm going to need, I, I sent some emails out about this a while back, that, that going forward with the appraisal review, while important for the timeframe of the project, the council's approval was for the appraisal, and so, yeah, I, well, I don't think, I don't think there would be any particular issue with, with, you know, sort of saying, hey, can we make this adjustment, especially at the time you go back to them, um, I think that would be fine. But I think, but, but to make that change would require their approval.
Okay, all right. All right, yeah, hey, this is progress, we don't need to, this, this, wonderful, so. All right, Larry, Larry, thank you for being on campus and driving, it's really reasonable.
I think it was how to do this stuff, sorry.
All right.
Coming back to the regular meeting, too?
Yeah, so if there's no other, um, pieces of business for the Subcommittee, um, can I, I think I need a motion to close the Subcommittee, correct?
You can do it as a chairman, oh, you're not the chairman, Larry, I guess. You can just adjourn it.
Yeah, so can I get a motion to adjourn this?
Oh, so you're in the Subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay, that was, um, Mike, Mike C?
Mike C and then Larry, secondly. Uh, all in favor of the Subcommittee adjourned? All right, all in favor, so everybody, it's unanimous. Alan, I, I'm sure you found this to be just riveting.
Always, always. It's, it's good to see progress.
Um, so now I need a motion to adjourn the, the final, uh, so.
That was Kathy, Kathy, Kathy Boo.
And Jay and E. Oh, it's felt so lucky to have you in, in, in. Um, all in favor of adjourned meeting?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, he needs to adjourn, um, hey, how good, how good, hey, everybody?
Thank you, everybody.
Alan's here.